Good evening. Welcome to our city council meeting. It's Monday, November seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. I'd like to pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you join me, I'll open us with prayer. Heavenly Father, we come before you today and well, thanksgiving is upon us and we want to thank you for the blessings you've given us as a country here, the ability to be free, the ability to worship you or some other entity. And Father, we thank you just for blessing us and guiding us. We ask for wisdom tonight. We always have plenty of knowledge here, but if we've missed something, please bring it to our attention and help us make wise decisions. And we just ask for safety to our community and to our police officers and all our city employees. We ask for you to watch over them. And once again, we thank you in Jesus' name. Amen. With that, we'll go down and review our city council meeting minutes from November third.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the minutes of the November third, twenty twenty-five city council meeting.
Second. Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Let's go down and review our appropriation ordinance number eleven dated November fifth.
I move for the approval of the appropriation ordinance number eleven dated November fifth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'd call for any visitors who aren't on the agenda to make your case now. See none. So let's go to our first item of business, rezoning David and Ohio Red Bud Ridge. Staff?
Good evening. Tonight, we're bringing forward the first major action item for the Red Bud Ridge residential development located at the corner of David and Ohio. This project represents a significant infill redevelopment opportunity on a long vacant four-point-four acre parcel that has historically been zoned commercial, but has not attracted commercial development. The applicants' ten investments have been working through the city's full development review process with staff and the planning commission to advance a small neighborhood scale residential project consisting of twenty-two units across nineteen lots. Red Bud Ridge supports several key objectives of the Augusta Action Comprehensive Plan, including increasing housing diversity and encouraging infill development. The area surrounding the site already includes a mix of R-one residential, commercial uses, and open space, making this location well-suited for an R-three district as a transitional zoning category. Tonight's request is only for the rezoning of this property from commercial to R-three multifamily residential. The rezoning is the foundational step that establishes what type of development is allowed on the site. As part of this development, there are several steps that have been going through the planning commission and will ultimately come before city council as well. There is also a planned development overlay as part of this rezoning, and there will also be a replating process. So there is a planned development overlay that has been provided in your packets as a reference only at this point. It has gone through and been approved through the planning commission, but it will come before city council at your next meeting for final approval of that PDO. So again, tonight is just the rezoning from commercial to R-three, and that is mainly to allow the size of lots that the development is requesting. The planned development overlay is a tool that we use to go outside of the normal, like setback requirements and lot coverage requirements that are in the zoning regs. So some of those, well, all of those deviations will be listed on that planned development overlay. The only ones of real significance are the front back setback, front setbacks have been reduced from what is currently in the zoning regs. So that's the purpose of the planned development overlay that you have in your packets. So again, tonight is the rezoning. The preliminary and final PDO have been reviewed and approved by the planning commission. The preliminary plat has been reviewed by the planning commission, and we've, staff's recently received the final plat and final drainage plan for that. So each one of these steps build upon the last to ensure that that zoning, the design, the infrastructure, and the subdivision regs all align with the developer's vision for this area. Public notice was issued. There was a public hearing held on October twenty-seventh with the planning commission. Staff has received no comments or protest. So I'm here to answer any questions that you might have, or staff recommends approval of ordinance twenty-two fifty-four to change the zoning classification of certain property located at David and Ohio to R-three.
Hey, Kami, in the packet, it shows the picture where the outline is.
Yes.
We're not getting rid of the sidewalk, right?
No.
Okay.
It's being on the plat. It will show as a reserve.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel?
Kami, are some of these going to be duplexes that are there? It's gonna make them multifamily?
So three lots will be, will have townhomes. They're kind of the, I guess, lot nineteen, lot five, and lot ten. Yes. And the other lots will be single-family. All of the units will have basements, including the townhomes. Yes.
The townhomes are duplex?
Townhome.
Single-family.
They'll be multifamily on those three lots.
Great.
So it's nineteen lots, twenty-two residential units.
So Kami, will you say that multifamily one more time for us, please?
Which lots? Nineteen, ten, and five.
It says twenty-two on the, is there just short?
So there's nineteen lots, but twenty-two residential units. So you have the three lots that will have two residential units on them. Shared homes.
I make a motion for the approval of ordinance two-two-five-four to change the zoning classification for property located at lot one, block B, Cottonwood Professional Park, second, Augusta Butler County, Kansas, to R-three multifamily residential, consistent with planning commission's finding and golden factors analysis.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. If there's no other questions, we'll have Erica call the roll.
Martin?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mar?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Just a note of history. At one time, there was a mobile home lot proposed for that corner, so. And it was fought hard, hardly against.
Used to be a theater there, right?
Yeah.
Drive-in, drive-in as a kid.
Yeah.
Drive-in.
Item number two, schedule a public hearing to take input and comment on the proposed twenty twenty-five budget amendments for December fifteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Mayor and counsel, before you, this, tonight is just the purpose of scheduling the public hearing. I did provide the funds that we're looking at proposing the amendments to. There is a total of, let's see here, there are nine funds. The majority of these were all as a result of direct action by the council to authorize purchases or expenses prior, with knowledge that this amendment would be required. But staff is recommending that you schedule the public hearing for Monday, December fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, at seven PM here at City Hall to take comment. And then after the public hearing, you would be able to vote on the amendments themselves. So with that, I'll turn it over for any questions.
I make the motion to schedule a public hearing on Monday, December fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, at seven PM at City Hall to take input and comment on the proposed amendments to the twenty twenty-five budget.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those that agree, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item three, the twenty twenty-five standard traffic ordinance and uniform public offense code. Staff?
Yes, Mayor and Council, I'd like to go ahead and invite Chief Ackerman up. And while he's walking up, I'll just give you a quick, quick background.
Can we take shirt off first?
Can you take that and throw it in the trash first?
Sean, do not picture him on the line.
Just show the top, just just his head.
Matter of a quick background for council and folks listening at, at home. The standard traffic ordinance, uniform public offense code, the, these are examples of kind of form codes that cities are able to adopt, that essentially adopts a body of laws that are relatively uniform across the entire state and everybody kind of generally agrees with. And, and it makes it easier to standardize so that as you're driving from one city to the next, you aren't dealing with entirely different traffic laws or entirely different offense code laws. Now, you do have the ability to do amendments or to make modifications to this, and we have had several over the years. But if anyone at home was, was interested, these are documents that are produced by the League of Kansas Municipalities. It just helped to standardize traffic laws from city to city for the most part, as well as the Uniform Public Offense Code. Our officers try to update them on a regular basis and, and, and try to utilize the more updated versions of those codes. Again, it just makes it easier so that you're not having to come up with your own traffic laws for every city, and then people are trying to learn different rules, no matter where they're driving. So that, that's the basis of these documents. Chief, you want to speak about the twenty twenty-five additions? Were there any notable changes that you guys wanted to draw attention?
Not really. One of the pages that I gave you have the changes. Uniform Public Offense Code only had trespassing on Kirkville Infrastructure Facility, and there were three other small ones in the traffic standard ordinance. A lot of it was usually just wording or a change in the law itself. It's nothing that we, that we worry about. We read them. It's nothing that we can't take care of and deal with. I spoke to the judge. If you look at the ordinance for the public offense code on the last page, it talks about the following sections you form. Public offense code are hereby deleted. That is something that the council did years ago, and we consider those still valid, that you don't want them. I looked at some of them. They're talking about like gaming charges and stuff like that. We'd probably take it through the county anyway, because you're gonna rise to level of felonies by the time we're done. I spoke to the judge, and we used to mark out things we didn't think we wanted, like the marijuana laws and stuff like that. He says, don't do that. Let's just take it all, except for what they've already taken out. Don't worry about it then. So if he wants to prosecute, whatever's in the books set by the state.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty-two fifty-five adopting twenty twenty-five standard traffic ordinance?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number twenty-two fifty-five. Erica, would you call the roll?
Yes. And Martin?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mar? Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the twenty, or ordinance number twenty-two fifty-six for the Uniform Public Offense Code.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Erica, would you call the roll for that?
Martin?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
And Mar?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Chief, I have a question.
Yes.
Tonight, on the way down here, I encountered a utility vehicle coming up State Street, and it had a bar of LED lights on the roof, and they were very blinding to the oncoming traffic. Is that?
If we catch them doing that, that's illegal. You can, you can only have white lights so far off the ground.
Okay.
If we catch them doing that, we can ticket them for that as well. Or if there's any color facing forward other than white, we do that as well. Just for information, we, we do publish both the UPOC and STO on the public website for the city's website and with the ordinances. So the public has full access to these as well, besides you guys.
Great.
Thank you.
That, that concludes our business. Are there, Mr. Mark, do you have anything else tonight?
I'd just like to add the firemen on the back for the, putting out the major fire they had up the north end of town. Probably kept a lot of their houses from catching on fire. It was a bad deal, I know, but man, it was big fire. I do not have any, I want, I want to thank the road crew for doing the overpass and patching holes and stuff there. It's a rough time of the year, man, and, and there's a lot of volume goes over that overpass and gets beat up. But I want to thank the road crew for everything they've been doing. I don't have anything else, Mr. Mayor.
Awesome. Mr. Burke?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I, I did have someone call me this weekend on Walnut where the path goes over behind Walmart, the bike path. And they were asking if we were gonna put any kind of flashing yellow light or sign to get people's attention so they wouldn't be distracted when cyclists or pedestrians were walking.
On Lulu, at that crossing? Is that the one you're referring to?
No, Walnut, on Walnut.
Where they've been working?
I know, I'm looking at it now, and I, I know we got the stripes there and stuff like that.
If you're going to add something, Walnut is different because it's a state highway. So if we're going to add that, I think that we have to get something approved through KDOT for that addition. So when those, when the markings that are out there were put down, those were approved by KDOT when that plan was done. It doesn't mean that you can't do something different, but if we're gonna add more, then you have to work through the state to get approval for it.
Okay.
So I, there aren't, there aren't any immediate plans unless.
I told them I would ask.
Yeah, there aren't any immediate plans unless that's the direction council would like us to go. And I think certainly it merits more conversation as that trail continues to develop and you actually get more traffic on it. You, you may, you may find it worthwhile to consider. But at, at this time, unless we have direction or something, we're not recommending it.
Okay, thank you.
Jeff?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Mark?
Just to thank you, Josh and team, and Anthony and team on the street side of things, taking care of what we escalated. Appreciate it.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, make a motion to go into executive session where we'll be for thirty minutes to discuss an individual employee's performance to conduct the city manager's quarter check-in for his annual evaluation pursuant to the non-elected personnel matter exception, KSA seven-five-four-three-one-nine-B-one. Ask the city manager, Josh Shaw, join the council executive session. Open meeting in the governing by to reconvene the council chambers at seven forty-eight PM.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to go into executive session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll be back in thirty minutes.
Chief, take that home, the jersey home.
Mr. Merrick, make a motion to executive session where no action was taken.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to come out of executive session where no action was taken. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Just had one thing I'd like to add. We did get a note from Sue Heffken about the 12th Annual Generous Hearts of Augusta Thanksgiving Day Luncheon. I just want to let the community know about that. Doors will open at 10:45 a.m. for dining. You're invited to enjoy Thanksgiving lunch with friends and family on Thanksgiving Day, Thursday, November 27, 2025. Surfing begins at 11 till 2 at the Augusta Senior Center at 640 Osage Street here in Augusta. So, anybody who wants to volunteer with that, they can contact Sue or any of the other members of the... Sue 644-8537. Get ahold of Sue and she can help you if you're shut-in or homebound folks and they can help you out with that. So, anyway, that's all we've got for that. Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Got a motion and a second.
If you're a shut-in or homebound folks, and they can help you out with that. So, anyway, that's all I've got for that. Make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all.